You have a...
I don't, I don't have a...
Uh-oh, lobster. Oh, you just unplugged Leslie.
Oh, that was Leslie.
Uh-oh. Technical difficulties. Happy New Year.
She's disconnected now.
Jill, baby.
Jill disconnected.
Hello, you're back on.
Yeah.
Okay, on that note, I would like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January ninth, two thousand and nineteen, regular board meeting, first board meeting of the year. Happy New Year, everybody. As we begin this meeting, the board would like to recognize and honor the first peoples of the Puget Sound Territories by acknowledging that we are on the land of the coastal Salish tribes. Ms. Ramirez, the roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Here.
Director DeWuff?
Here.
Director Geary?
Here.
Director Mack?
Here.
Director Pinkham?
Present.
Director Harris?
Here.
If everyone would stand, please, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's students from Salmon Bay K eight will be performing scenes from "As You Like It" by William Shakespeare. I'd like to invite directors to take a seat with me in the audience for this performance, and I welcome our guests.
Thank you so much. We're honored to be here today. My name is Glide Hart King. I am the one woman theater department at Salmon Bay School. Yes, thank you, thank you. I am thrilled to feel the support of the arts in Seattle Public Schools. Gail Selhorst in particular, driving force behind it. I know that visual art and music are large in the elementary and the middle school curriculum, and theater not so much. But theater is a place where those two things come together, that integrates language arts and visual arts and music and all different kinds of life skills, twentieth century skills, twenty first century skills, that are very, very useful. Not to mention the fact that we continue to do Shakespeare four hundred years later. And it amazes me that the words of that bard are still so relevant today, and you will, you will hear some words that really are very good for what we're going through here in the U.S. So without further ado, the students will introduce themselves, and you will enjoy. Thank you.
Oh, my name is Griffin Martin, and I am in eighth grade, and I'm gonna do Marsutio's monologue from Romeo and Juliet. "Oh, then I see Quee Mab hath been with you. She's the fairy's midwife, and she comes in shape no bigger than an agate stone on the forefinger of an alderman, drawn by a team of little adames over men's noses as they lie asleep. Her wa... her wagon spokes made of long spinner's legs, the, her cover of the wings of grasshoppers, her traces of the smallest spider web, her collars of the moonshine's watery beams, her, her whip of cricket's bone, the lash of film. Her waggoner, a small gray-coated gnat, not half so big as a round little worm, pricked from the lazy finger of a maid. Her chariot is an empty hazelnut, made by the joiner squirrel or gr- old grub. Time out, oh, mind the fairy's coachmakers, and in this stage she gallops, night by night, through lovers' brains, and they dream of love. Oh, or courtiers' knees, and they dream on curtsy street; or lora's fingers, and they stray on kisses' dream, which off the angry Mab with blisters, plagues, because their breast was sweetmeats tainted are. Sometimes she driveth over a courtier's nose, and then dreams of heat smelling out of suit. And sometimes comes she with a tithes' pigtail, tickling a parson's nose as he lies asleep. And sometimes she driveth over a soldier's neck, and then dreams he of cutting foreign throats, of breeches ambuscados, Spanish blades, of healths five-fathom deep, at which anon drums in his ear, at which he starts and wakes, and thus being frightened, swears a prayer or two, and sleeps again. This is that very Mab that plants the manes of horses in night, and bakes elflocks in foul sluttish hairs, at once untangled, much misfortune bods. This is the hag that when maids lie on their backs and presses them and learn them first to bear, making them women of good carriage. This is she."
I'm Chloe Millsad, I'm in eighth grade, and I will be playing the role of Celia.
I'm Anna Ashman, I'm in eighth grade, and I will be playing the role of Rosalind.
I'm Mira Slapkin, I'm in seventh grade, and I'll be playing the part of Touchstone.
And we are doing a scene from "As You Like It" by Shakespeare.
"I pray thee, Rosalind, sweet my coz, be merry."
Dear Celia, I shew more mirth than I am mistress of, and were you yet our marrier? Unless you could teach me to forget a banished father, you must not learn me to remember an extraordinary pleasure.
You know my father hath no child but I, nor none is like to have, and truly, when he dies, thou shalt be his heir. For what he hath taken away from my father preforce, I will render thee again, in affection, by my honor I will, and when I break that oath, let me turn monster. Therefore, my sweet Rose, my dear Rose, be merry."
What shall be our sport, then?
Let us sit and mock good fortunes, that her gifts may henceforth bestowed equally.
I would we could do so, for her benefits are mightfully misplaced, and the bountiful blind woman doth most mistake in her gifts to a woman.
'Tis true, for though she makes fair, she scarce makes honest, and though she makes honest, she makes very ill-favoredly.
Nay, now thou goest from fortune's office to nature's. Fortune's reigns in the gifts of the world, not in the liniments of nature.
For always the dullness of the fool is the sharpener of the wits. How now wit, whether wonder you?
Mistress, you must come away to your father.
Were you made the messenger?
No, but by my honor, I was bid to come for you.
Where learned you that oath, fool?
Of a certain knight that swore by his honor that they were good pancakes, and swore by his honor that the mustard was not, but I'll stand to it, that the pancakes were not and the mustard was good, and yet the knight was not forsworn.
How prove you that, in the great heap of your knowledge?
Aye, marry, now unmuscle your wisdom.
Stand both forth you now, stroke your beards, and swear to me that I am a knave.
Yes, sir, thou art a knave. By our beards if we had them, thou art.
By my knavery if I had it, then it were, but if you swear by that that is not, you are not forsworn, no more than a knight swearing by his honor, for he never had any, or if he did, he'd worn it away before he ever saw those pancakes or that mustard.
Pray thee, who is that thou meanest?
One that old Frederick, your father, loves.
My father's love is enough to honor him, enough! Speak no more of him, ye'll be whipped for taxation one of these days.
More pity that this fools do speak wisely than wise men do speak foolishly.
By my troth, thou sayest true, for since the little wit that fools have is silenced, the little foolery that wise men have makes a great show.
Hi, I am Luna Crumbroon, and I play the role of Rosalind.
I'm Corinne Yakabuchi, and I play the role of Orlando.
And just to mention, in this scene, in some parts of the play, Rosalind disguises herself as a man and goes off into the forest confronting the man she is in love with. "I will speak to him, like a saucy lackey, and under the guise, play the knave with him." "Do you hear, forester?"
I hear very well, thank you.
"I pray you, what is it a clock?"
You should ask me what time of day, there is no clock in the forest.
"Time travels in divers paces with divers persons. I'll tell you who time ambles withal, who time trots withal, who he gallops withal, and who he stands still withal."
"I pray thee, who doth he trot withal?"
"He trots hard with a young maid, between the contract of her marriage and the date is solemnized."
"Who ambles? Time withal."
"With a priest that lacks Latin and a rich man that hath not the gout, for one sleeps easily because he cannot study, and the other lives merrily because he feels no pain."
"Who doth he gallop withal?"
"With a thief to the gallows, for though he go as softly as foot can fall, he still thinks himself too soon there."
"Who stays time still withal?"
"With lawyers on vacation, for they sleep between term and term, and then they do not perceive how time moves."
"Where dwell you, pretty youth?"
"Here in the skirts of the forest, with a shepherdess, my sister."
"Are you native of this place? Your accent is something finer than you could purchase in so removed a dwelling."
"I've been told so of many, but indeed an old religious uncle of mine taught me to speak, and I thank God I am not a woman, to be touched with so many giddy offenses as tax their whole sex withal. You look poorly."
"I am one that is so love-shaked, I pray you, do you have the remedy?"
"You have not his marks. I know what it is to be a man in love, but you have not his marks."
"What are his marks?"
"A lean cheek, which you have not, a blue eye and sunken, which you have not, an unquestionable spirit, which you have not, a beard neglected, which you have not, but I pardon you for that. Then your hose should be ungartered, your bonnet unbanded, your sleeves uncuffed, your shoes untied, and everything about you demonstrating a careless desolation. But you are no such man. You claim to be in love, but truly you are not."
"Fair youth, I would I could make thee believe I love..."
"Me believe it? But, in good sooth, are you he who writes the verses on the trees wherein Rosalind is much admired?"
"I swear to thee, youth, by the white hand of Rosalind, I am he, that unfortunate he."
"But are you truly as much in love as your rhymes speak?"
"Neither rhyme nor reason can express how much."
"Love is merely madness, yet I can cure it by counsel."
"Did you ever cure anyso?"
"Yes, one, and in this manner. He was to imagine me his love, his mistress, and I set him every day to woo me, and thus I cured him, and in this fashion I will take upon me to clean your, to wash your liver as clean as there will not be one spot of love within it."
"I would not be cured, youth."
"You would if you would but call me Rosalind, and come to this wood every day at this hour and woo me."
"Aye, by the faith of my love, I will, with all my heart, good youth."
"Nay, you must call me your Rosalind. Well, until tomorrow, then."
Hello, I'm Ved Joshi, and I'm gonna do the Jake's monologue, "All the world's stage", from "As You Like It". "All the world's stage, all the men and women merely players, they have their exits and their entrances. One man in his time plays many parts, his acts being seven ages. At first, the infant, mewling and puking in the nurse's arms, and then the whining schoolboy, with his satchel and shining morning face, creeping like snail unwillingly to school, and then the lover, sighing like furnace with a woeful ballad made to his mistress's eyebrow, and then the soldier, full of strange oaths and bearded like the pard, jealous in honor, sudden and quick in quarrel, seeking the bubble reputation even in the cannon's mouth, and then the justice, with fair round belly and good cape in line, with eyes severe and beard of formal cut, which, full of wise saws and modern instances, and so he plays his part. The sixth age shifts into the lean and slippered pantaloon, with spectacles on nose and pouch on side, his youthful hose well saved a world too wide, for his shrunk shank and his big manly voice turning again towards childish treble, pipes and whistles in his sound. Last scene of all, that ends this strange, eventful history, is second childishness and mere oblivion, sends teeth, sends eyes, sends taste, sends everything."
Before you leave, we have, we have a tradition, and you've, you've shared your names, and some of you, your grades, and it sounds like there's quite a few eighth graders. So if we could just, I'll hand you the microphone, if you could just do first name and what high school is gonna benefit from your amazing talents, either next year or in the years following.
I'm Anna, and I'm either going to Ballard High School or Center School.
I'm Chloe, and I'm going to Ingram High School.
I'm Griffin, and I'm either gonna go to Ballard High School or Lincoln.
And those of you that aren't going next year, if you know where you're going in two years or three years...
I don't.
Don't get. Well, just tell us your first name, just as a reminder.
I'm Mira, I'm gonna go to Ballard High.
I'm Corinne.
I'm Luna.
I'm Ved.
Thank you again for sharing with us, entertaining us. We begin our meeting. At this point in our meeting, I will turn it over to Superintendent Juno for her comments. The floor is yours.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Happy New Year to everybody. Twenty nineteen is unbelievable. Tonight's comments will be a slight change from how I regularly do them with all the slideshows and stuff, because I've, there's a few things, anyway. But first, I would just like to introduce Diane Debacker. She is our new chief academic officer, and she has just an introduction statement for all of you, so, Dr. Debacker.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you, Superintendent Juno, for allowing me part of your time to visit with the, with the board and with the community tonight. It is my absolute pleasure to be in Seattle Public Schools. This is my third full day, and I, I can't tell you how excited I am to be here, and most importantly, how impressed I am with Seattle Public Schools, with the staff that I've met here, with the team, and with the enthusiasm that I have sensed from everybody about what's happening in Seattle Public Schools. You have such a rich history of, of what's happened, and you have a great plan forward, and I am so excited to be part of it. Just a little bit about who I am, I'm a native Kansan. I, I drove from Kansas beginning last Wednesday, it was a three and a half day drive with my husband, who had a horrible cold, gave me that cold, but I'm finally over it. Beautiful country that we traveled through, and we made the decision to make the final trek into Seattle on Saturday morning, because I wanted to see the beautiful scenery as we came over the Skonami Pass, I didn't pronounce it right, so I apologize for that. But I'm so glad that we made the decision to come in during the daylight. My background is I'm a lifelong educator. I've been in education for thirty-six plus years, and I jokingly say that I have done nearly everything in education except drive the bus and be the cafeteria lady, and I would be happy to do either of those if given the opportunity here in Seattle. I am here in Seattle for three reasons. The very first reason is because of your superintendent. I had the privilege of serving with Denise, with Superintendent Juno, as Commissioner of Education when I was Commissioner in Kansas, and she was Commissioner or Secretary in Montana. And in a room full of fifty commissioners or secretaries of education from across the United States, as you can imagine, there are always some egos in the room of those individuals. But Denise was always the voice of reason. She was always the voice that as we were discussing issues that would happen across the United States in terms of education, she was the one who would bring us back to reality and ask us why, and ask us why we were making those decisions. So the opportunity to work with you, Superintendent Juno, as a very strong leader and in a system that has a very, very bright future and a wonderful history, I'm so happy to be here. My second reason for here is because of Seattle Public Schools. I've watched you from afar for many years, for many years, and I am excited about the progress that you've made, and I want to be part of the progress that you will make from this point on. And the third reason is very personal. Third reason is all about my dad, and I'll tell the story, and a few of you have heard it before. But my dad was in the Navy, he was a Seabee, and after he had spent his time in the Navy, he ended up here in Seattle for a little bit of time, where he was working as a welder in the shipyard. My dad was a very tiny man, and so he could shimmy down into the holes and he could get into the tight places and do the welding. And he talked about his time here in Seattle, and how he rented a house from a woman who was very strict. She allowed no smoking and no drinking, and there was a curfew for him even as an adult to be in the house. And so for me, Seattle is a way of bringing me home. It's a way of me connecting with my father, who passed away about a year ago. And so those are my three reasons for being here. They're all very, very genuine. Little bit about me personally, I've been married for thirty-six and a half years, I have a wonderful husband who has supported me through many different crazy opportunities that I've had, from being in Abi Dabi in the United Arab Emirates, to being in Kansas and doing some fantastic jobs in education. So my husband, I put him on the plane this morning, I know it sounds like it's a two-year-old, and I put him on the plane, but I escorted him to the airport this morning for him to travel back to Kansas to get our cat out of the kennel, who's been there since last Wednesday. I just received a note from him, he successfully retrieved the cat, and she has not clawed him to death, so that's good. I think that's enough about myself to get started. I am excited to be here as a chief academic officer. Thank you for the opportunity, Superintendent Juno, thank you to the board for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with each of you in the coming months and years. Thank you.
Next, I just want to update everyone on where we are with the strategic plan. We start our second round of engagement this month. There is one more board work session and one more steering committee meeting as well. We still hope to have a draft plan at the end of February with intro and then action in March, and so it's on an aggressive timeline, but I think it's coming together really well. I just had a meeting with all the principals at the LLD, and there were some really good comments that came out of that, and so I'm excited to start rolling that out into community and, and see some of the comments that come out from that. This is, this is our current engagement date, so this is a draft. I think there, one got finalized, another one got finalized today, and there's one that is pending. So this will be our community engagement dates for round two, which will be really about strengthening and refining the priorities and the goals of the plan. We hold our first meeting this, like I said, with our, with our principals, and they really did love the theory of action, and I know all of you have seen a draft of that as well. They loved the intentionality of the plan and the idea that the plan was actually strategic, that we were honing in and really putting down on paper what we've been talking about so long as a district. They'll, the principals will share the draft plan with their staff, and so I'm, like I said, excited to share the plan with the community. I'm thankful for all the people who have contributed so far. The steering committees come up with a great, the great priorities, a great theory of action, so just really excited about that. And then the final thing that we have for superintendent comments is Jo Lynn Bergy to share her board report this evening. Thank you, Director Berg, or Chief Bergy.
Good evening, Jo Lynn Bergy, Chief Financial Officer. Got no clicker. You're gonna click? Okay. So we are going to talk about, this is a required report by board policy that we come and do, so Audit and Finance Committee members have already seen this in the last ANF meeting, so it will be new for the other two board directors and for the public. We will talk about seventeen eighteen very quickly. We have four funds, so we have a general fund where the majority of our dollars flow through, capital fund that we're familiar with as far as for building and construction, a very tiny debt service fund, and then associated student body fund. So we do report monthly with our monthly financials to the Audit and Finance Committee, and the district's required F-196 reporting to OSPI has been completed on time, certified, all of our documents, of course, are submitted on time and correctly, and so this presentation will meet our board requirements. So as we start, we'll talk about this slide that we'll spend a little bit of time on, just a couple slides that will go into more detail. This slide shows seventeen eighteen, the adopted budget, that's the first column, and then the actual year-end amounts. And the three numbers that we have circled in red, just gonna call out the differences between budget and actual, right? So we had revenues estimated at eight hundred and eight million dollars. Our revenues came in slightly higher at eight hundred and twenty million dollars, so there was eleven point eight million dollars of revenue above what we'd budgeted, and then our expenditures were less than we'd budgeted. So that's exactly the right direction that you want to be. You want to budget your revenues and your expenditures low, and you want both of those actual numbers to come in, you want revenues to come in higher than you budgeted, and you want expenditures to come in slightly less than you budgeted. That resulted in an ending fund balance of about a hundred and fourteen million dollars, which tracks with how we ended the prior year. So we can look at, this is going to show us revenues, and I'll actually go on to the next slide, this is the numbers, but this is a picture, I think, which does better justice to the information. So you can see that our state apportionment dollars in seventeen eighteen, there was quite a significant jump up from sixteen seventeen, and that had to do with the increased funding that was provided by the legislature for McCleary. So you can see that state revenue is about forty-six percent in seventeen eighteen of our total dollars. The next biggest component of our revenue is local levy, and that is twenty-six point five percent. Now that number will be dropping because of the levy switch that they have done, so they've lifted up state apportionment and they've lowered levy authority, so we're gonna be seeing that state number increase and that local levy number go down as far as percentage-wise. We'll still have a whole pie with a hundred percent. After that is state grants, and you can see, oftentimes people ask us a lot of questions about federal grants. Well, for Seattle Public Schools, federal grants is only five percent of our total revenue, but it entails probably thirty percent of our effort and our work as far as meeting compliance requirements for those things. And then you can see local non-tax or fees that we collect, like child nutrition fees, and other non-tax or other revenues are like city levy dollars and other grant dollars that we would receive. So the expenditures by object, again, you can see that we tracked really steadily as far as... as far as sixteen seventeen to seventeen eighteen, our personnel expenditures remained at eighty-four percent of our total expenditures. And that's right in line with what other districts are experiencing. So typically, a district has somewhere between eighty and eighty-seven percent of their total expenditures are related to personnel. So that's salaries and benefits for staffing. And then after that, the next largest category is purchased services, i.e. contracts. So our transportation contract would be the largest contract that we have sitting in that category. Supplies are things that are purchase orders, things of that nature. You can see travel, we're at point one percent for travel expenditures in our district. And then capital outlay are those items that are five thousand dollars or more. So there's a difference in the accounting world. You categorize things as capital outlay if they cost you five thousand dollars more per item. So we have very few of those expenditures. Two things that come to mind for capital expenditures in seventeen eighteen were refrigerator trucks. We had to buy two new refrigerator trucks. So you can see that our total expenditures were eight hundred and sixteen million dollars. Prior year were seven hundred and fifty-two million dollars. Again, tracking well as far as our expenditures increase when we get additional revenues. A lot of that increase percentage-wise really goes to staffing. Moving on, this is that picture. We won't talk about that in detail. Then another category that we often look at, that we often get questions about, is ending fund balance. So ending fund balance in sixteen seventeen, that's how much money did you end with during the year? It's not available dollars necessarily. That's why we break out these categories to explain. Hundred and fourteen million dollars, gosh, do you have a financial issue in this district with an ending fund balance of a hundred and fourteen million dollars? Well, most of that, almost all of it, is assigned to some other purpose. So there is non-spendable inventory. So our food commodities that we're required to book are our inventory items. And then we have grants. So if we have grants that we have received prepayment for that we haven't spent all the money, those dollars are held aside just for those grants. It's the only thing we can spend that on. You're familiar during our budget work sessions, we have a lot of discussion about the Economic Stabilization Fund. We ended the year with that three percent or so. It's twenty-four point five million dollars. The assigned fund balance, we'll talk about in more detail in just a moment. That's the largest category. And then unassigned is really unrestricted unassigned fund balance dollars of three point seven million. And the prior year, we'd ended with about four point two. So if we move on to the next slide, we're going to see really what makes up assigned fund balance. So assigned fund balance is things that we're putting money aside for earmarked for a certain purpose or school carryforwards. So schools have both self-help accounts. They have grant dollars or PTA donation dollars that they get to carry over in their own school account. So that's what those items are. Central carryforward has the same kind of thing. So it's items in central office budgets that people carry forward that belong to a certain department. So for example, we have surplus sales of assets. And those dollars are held in a carryforward account for central office. That's one example. And then as you're aware, when we work through our budget work sessions, we have had a lot of money that we have been dedicating and saving up for a rainy day that we knew that we were dedicating to either the eighteen nineteen or the nineteen twenty budget. And those are outlined for you there. And then the last item that we have to hold money for that I'll speak to are legal settlements. So that's a required component of fund balance where if we have legal settlements that we think that there is a likely outcome that we have to pay out money for, we hold money for that. It's not a guarantee that we'll pay those out, but it's simply a placeholder for any lawsuits that are currently in progress. Next slide. That would conclude the general fund information that I'm sharing with you tonight. We'll move on there. I would like to note that on Slide four and on Slide seven, there was a typo. Total expenditures on Slide four is accurate. So I think maybe you'll hear about that in public comment. So that's been noted and we'll make that correction. So the capital fund, this shows beginning fund balance as adopted by the budget and then how we actually came in year-to-date for the close of the seventeen eighteen school year. So we had a beginning fund balance that came in higher. We started with a better fund balance than we'd anticipated. Again, generally speaking, as you budget, you anticipate lower revenue than you may receive and you anticipate spending every dollar that you're budgeting. And that doesn't generally happen, especially in the capital projects fund. So we have ended the fund balance in the capital projects fund with forty-six million dollars. Again, a healthy fund balance. We had been accelerating some projects. And so the fund balance was a number that we had been watching closely in the capital projects fund. But we don't have any cash flow issues at this point in time. All of those accelerated projects like Arbor Heights, we've worked through that timeline and we're into a position where we know that we're gonna have a positive fund balance and have enough cash flow. Moving on, debt service fund. This is a transfer from the capital projects fund. The only debt that we have are the outstanding bonds on the John Stanford Center. So we make those total payments. This last year was about two and a half million dollars. Next slide is our ASB fund. So these are student-directed. These are for classes, clubs, sports, and other activities at schools. The schools set those budgets themselves. And they, the students have to approve those expenditures at the school level before they roll up to the district level. So they estimate their own revenues, they do their own fundraising, and they're in control of a lot of their own expenditures. So this is their activity. They again have a healthy fund balance, so we're on track with them as well. That would conclude my presentation and I would be happy to take my minutes.
Director Mack.
I apologize that I don't know this number or this, the answer to this question. Off the top, I probably should. But on Slide six, the fourteen percent of state grants, we have state apportionment and then state grants separated out. And I'm, just for clarification, can you clarify why we have state apportionment and then what those grants are that are separate?
Yeah, so there's certain grant items that come, they don't come on the state apportionment schedule, they're considered state grants. The biggest one that I could highlight is probably, is LAP. So the Learning Assistance Program comes to us as a state grant. The Transitional Bilingual Program also comes to us as a grant. So there's certain funds that the state has identified for certain programs that we're required to categorize as state grants.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, we're moving through the agenda at a blistering pace here. And this brings us to where, really? Wow. Yeah, board committee reports. I'd like to invite directors to share any work that they've been doing or are doing in preparation or with their committees. I'm looking for someone who'd like to open. Preview of the future. Director Mack.
Good evening. I didn't actually take notes, so I'm gonna wing it. But I do have the agenda. Operations met prior to the previous board meeting in December, so I won't recap that. Our next meeting is actually tomorrow. The agenda, I believe, has been posted. And we're going to be working on the committee work plan for the year. As well as getting our financial budget report, talking about community engagement for the levies. By the way, there's a bunch of great community presentation informa- meetings going on. They're posted on our website and on social media. And I encourage if you'd like to learn about the levies to attend one of those. There was one last night. We are also going to be talking further about capacity management policy age thirteen. And getting a verbal report on the capital projects. There's a semi-annual report process that we have. As well as hearing about what's going on with our Playground Redevelopment Fund. And touching base on whether or not we should consider becoming a certified body for the GCCM process and the construction process. So welcome to come to our meeting tomorrow. It's four thirty to six thirty, right next door. And, oh, I also wanted to say I'm grateful to be appointed the chair again this year. And we've shifted who's actually on the committee. So I'm saying goodbye to Director Pinkham. I've really enjoyed working with you on the committee. And welcoming Director Wolf. And Director Patu is gonna be continuing forward. I think that's all.
Director Pinkham?
Concierge, thank you. A&amp;F, there wasn't much new to report since the last board, regular board meeting. But I did get the feedback from our internal auditor and Jo Lynn Bergy and her assistant forwarded me the minutes, our draft agenda for our next meeting. Andrew Medina didn't have anything new to share with me since our last meeting. So just go right now to our planned meeting for Monday, January fourteenth. We don't have any bars coming to be introduced at our meeting. It's more informational, things coming forward to the A&amp;F committee. And so we'll just go through our regular agenda with monthly budget updates and our committee annual work plan. And our new members include myself, Jill Geary, and Eden, you're still with us? Yes. And I know Jill expressed some interest to add to the A&amp;F agenda. Then I shared it with Jolynn, I haven't checked to see if Jolynn responded, but it might come under our committee annual work plan, the comments that she has. So those are the only updates I have for A&amp;F since we're starting out the new year. Happy New Year, everyone, and welcome back.
I'll tee this off for curriculum instruction and just looking back a little bit in the past three years as Chair of CNI, I feel like a huge amount of work has been done. And I won't go through it in detail, but you know, there's been work around instructional philosophy policy, there's been work around the assessment policy, some very bedrock things that have, I think, helped the district move forward in our educational system. I'm super excited to be handing the chair position to Jill Geary. And she's kindly allowing me to stay on the committee so I can heckle. Would you like to highlight what's coming up?
Sure.
Next Tuesday at your first CNI meeting?
Yes. So honored to have the opportunity to chair curriculum instruction. And with our new chief instructional officer who I had a chance to meet today, that was, I'm excited to work with her and it'll be fresh. We have new faces. We can think about how we wanna do it and that is an exciting opportunity. But we do have a pretty full agenda keyed up, a lot of the same things that we've been working on for a while, but really important, a board action report will be coming on the approval of courses with new content as defined by superintendent procedure. And so we have spent a lot of time discussing about how we're going to define the coursework that is being presented in our schools. I know it's of great interest to a lot of people, that which we are going to define our own curriculum and that which we will leave to the Principals to supplement as they see appropriate for their schools. So that will be the one action item we're talking about. We have our standing agenda items around our SMART goals, our standing SMART goals, twenty-four credit, secondary school revisioning, and instructional materials. And then we do have a number of policies that we've been working on for quite a while. And so anybody who has been following, we continue to move those forward. And that's equitable access to programs and services, performance management, selection of instructional materials, and electronic resources and use of the internet. And I know different communities find those particular policies very important. And so that's an opportunity to stay abreast of that. Special attention items continue to be advanced learning, CTE and curriculum and instruction policy committee work plan. So I look forward to chairing the committee this year and coming up with a new plan and, you know, moving forward on all this great work. Thank you.
On behalf of my colleague, President Leslie Harris, I will tee up a couple things about executive committee. There was not an executive committee meeting since our last board meeting. So I'll just restate a little bit some of the things that are going on. And then give Director Harris an opportunity to share out if she wants to from her esteemed spot behind the microphone there. Couple of things that I wanna bring to folks' attention. The, we're gonna be working on the adoption of 2019 board goals and objectives. And that's something that's actively being worked by the board and by the executive committee. We'll be looking at retreat agendas in March and June, upcoming agendas and for those board retreats, so we can spend more time together. And also finalizing what are our oversight work sessions for the upcoming year. So those are some of the three really important things. And then I'll open it up. Director Harris, did you wanna add anything to that?
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Burke. Can you hear me? Okay, terrific. So the next executive session is next Thursday, not tomorrow, but a week from Thursday at three o'clock. And one of the things that we'll need to do is to change the timing of those executive committee meetings. And we're still talking about when that will happen. Because at least two of the three of us have other work commitment conflicts. So stay tuned for that. The rich conversation we had in the last executive committee meeting that Director Mack was so kind to sit in on was about getting the community engagement standing committee set up. And because of the reorganization, that's moved around a bit and we're looking forward to that rich discussion. The other is back again to that very, very difficult topic about additional funding for schools. We've started collecting data. And the additional funding, not PTA, not levy dollars, but PTSA, booster clubs, and foundation dollars is quite shocking and to be continued and part of a race and equity conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, President Harris. So this brings us to student comments. Unfortunately, we don't have a student speaker joining us. Oh, sorry, wait, there's more? Legislative, thank you. And city.
Right, city. So very briefly, reporting out about our legislative activities, not a lot to share. The legislative session hasn't started yet. It will start in a couple weeks. But I attended the WASDA Legislative Committee Meeting. And on Friday and Saturday, two full days, where we talk about how we're gonna be engaging on the Day on the Hill. All three school board, I'm sorry, not school board, all three school associations, the Superintendents Association, the Business Association, and the School Board Association, WASDA, WASBO, and WASA. Alphabet soup. Get together early next month. I'm sorry, I don't have the date on top of me. Where we have a conference and we all visit with our legislators. So we work on kind of coordinating that. And WASDA's legislative priorities now are posted online, very pretty. They align very much with Seattle Public Schools legislative priorities. I also dropped a copy of this in everybody's box, so you have the pretty copy. And I just wanna kind of point out that WASDA's legislative priority, one of them, along with many of the other associations, includes restoring access to local funding for local needs and holding districts harmless. That there's a complete recognition that the McCleary fix, in quotes, did not actually fix things and that we still need increased access to local levy dollars. So I look forward to talking further with our legislators and the legislative session beginning. And encourage my colleagues to touch base with me and with Director Geary on how to get engaged.
Yep, I don't have anything to report from city liaison role. Folks are on break, so hopefully within next month, we'll have our regular meetings back on schedule and be able to report back.
Okay, thank you. So now, no other committees or special topics? Looking around, okay, we're good. We don't have a student speaker joining us, but we will have a student from Interagency Academy speaking during public testimony tonight. So we, we're looking forward to that. We've now reached the consent portion of tonight's agenda. May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Yes.
Are we gonna request for anything to remove for sure?
That would be after we move in second.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
Approval of the consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Do directors have any items they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Director Pinkham?
I'm requesting to, to remove item three, since it's been updated since introduction. So, we can have, hopefully, some transparency. There's some questions I had on it as well.
Okay. Item three has been removed from the consent agenda. I am, uh, looking for a, uh, new motion for an amended consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as amended.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent agenda passes as amended. So, now, for, um, items removed for the, from the consent agenda, um, we're going to defer until after public testimony so that that particular item can be, um, voted on again, or could be voted on individually. Which, sorry, I'm trying, trying to keep it together here. Um, this brings us to Board comments. So, we've reached, um, the public testimony component, but the time doesn't start officially until five thirty. So, we have approximately twenty minutes. And if directors would like to share some comments, I'm going to, uh, take chair's prerogative and, and also open it up to people if they, although resolutions from a Board have a very special and formal meeting, if there are some New Year's wishes or, or hopes and dreams that you'd like to put out, you're welcome to weave those into your comments or, or not. Anyone like to go first? Director DeWolf, you're holding the mic.
Thank, thank you, Director Burke. Um, first, uh, as a citizen of the Chippewa Cree Nation of Rockyville, Montana, I also wanna recognize that we are on stolen indigenous land. I'm honored to live, work, and serve here in the Coast Salish Territories in the Chi- City of Chief South, who is a descendant of the Soqamish, the Muckelshut, and the Duamish. Um, thank you to Directors Burke, um, Richard Best, and Stephen Goldblatt of the BECS Oversight Committee for a really great meeting we had over holiday, uh, winter break. Continuing to have, uh, really great discussions around community workforce agreements and talked a lot about centering student voice and racial equity. And so, those conversations will be continuing. And we'll look to, um, Director, uh, Mack and Burke, as well as President Harris, in kind of planning our next steps for those conversations. So, there will be more information coming soon. Also, did wanna mention, um, each year, uh, actually every other year in odd years, the federal government via the, via HUD requires that, um, continuum of cares across the country do an observational count of the people experiencing homelessness. Um, I'm, I'm here today to ask if there are any volunteers for our annual point in time count of people experiencing homelessness. Please visit allhomekc.org. We still need a lot of volunteers. This is really critical work in understanding the issue here in our city and gives us some really great data. The other thing I wanted to mention was that tomorrow in, at least on the hill that I live on, uh, in, uh, tomorrow at seven PM at Monlake Elementary, we'll be having another levies information night. And I really encourage folks to come out and learn more about, um, the importance of those levies in our work here in Seattle Public Schools. Um, because as we know, the state has not fully funded, um, public education. I also wanna mention that on Saturday, um, at three PM at El Centro de la Raza, um, we're gonna have a really great, uh, event around ethnic studies here at Seattle Public Schools. And encourage folks to come out, learn more about it, give feedback, um, and ensure that our, uh, curriculum, um, reflects, um, communities' needs and concerns. That's all I have to say. Um, yeah, then it's kind of a quiet winter break. Thanks.
Would anyone else like to follow that? Director Pinkham, thank you.
Is my mic live? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, all right. Uh, yeah, now, Tatskala, good evening, thank you. Just wanna, again, welcome everyone back with the new year, uh, two thousand nineteen. That just prime, odd number year just seems strange, uh, but we'll make it a fantastic year, all right? Uh, given that for some of us, this is gonna be, are we gonna get back on the campaign trail? Or what are we gonna do? Those decisions will have to be made. I don't have, um, much, uh, to share, but again, just wanted to welcome everyone back. Thank you to the Salmon Bay and their presentation. I just remember reading those Shakespeare books and when I was back in high school and a little bit in college. And it's, uh, good to see that even in middle school, we're getting our students exposed to, to his writings. And welcome to Diane Debacker. Am I sa- am I correctly? Thank you, and welcome to the Seattle School District. Hope that trip from Kansas wasn't too bad for three days. And, but again, welcome. Also, I'd announce that the University of Washington will be having its, uh, Winter Powwow Saturday, January twenty-sixth in the Hub. Uh, grand entries at one PM and seven PM. So, please come out and, and join, uh, the students at the University of Washington. And this is the way their primer to, uh, prepare for their Spring Powwow. Also, I'd like to announce again, the Urbanated Education Alliance does meet Tuesdays and Thursdays at Robert Eaglestaff Middle School in Lipton Springs, K through eight. Um, if you wanna come out there, in six to eight-thirty generally. And you'll see signs out there as far as which building they'll be in. So, just please follow the signs and, uh, come and enjoy some good food, as well as some cultural activities and also some tutoring and stuff to support our students. That is all I have for today and still got fifteen minutes to kill. Thank you. Tatskala.
Director Geary, it's all yours.
Happy New Year. Um, yes, I've spent a lot of time, uh, over the break. I, I really stepped back from everything, but spent a lot of time thinking about how I wanna spend this, um, my final year on the school board. And just reflecting on so many of the exciting things that have happened, um, in the three years that I've been here. And I just wanna make sure that whatever I contribute now is gonna continue on, uh, along with that work. So, I'm excited to be on Audit and Finance and to, uh, hopefully work with the, um, Seattle Council PTSA in terms of creating transparency around all the public funding sources that go into our buildings. And I think that that is an issue that has become urgent. And we hear a lot about it, not only here from people testifying, but out in the greater world and in our buildings. And so, I just think that that, it's an exciting opportunity to look for ways to identify what those funding sources are and also look for ways that we can make it more equitable. Cause I know our population is looking for opportunities to have the money be available more equitably. And we need to help them create that structure. I'm, um, I, uh, would really like to, so, at the end of the year, we heard from several families that the programs that promote racial segregation within our schools causes a great amount of dissonance and discord amongst students, um, within the schools themselves. And it is harmful and it is negative. And I think that we, the Board, have to recognize that. It is, it is atrocious to hear mothers come and testify that their children come home saying that they are stupid because they have been put in what has clearly to them been defined as the stupid class. Now, that may not be true from the building's perspective, but if that is the message that those students are getting based upon the racial segregation that they see within the school and the labels on the classes that are being allowed to them, then that is unacceptable. So, I'm going to work on some way to create a policy from the Board. And I'm only one person, so it will require, um, that we, as a Board, come around this. But I'm going to attempt to work on something that will prohibit the maintenance or creation of programs that, um, result in that type of racial segregation without any demonstration that is eliminating the opportunity and/or the achievement gap. So, that is an exciting thing for me to think about working on. And I know that's a big deal. But I think it's, it's super important. Um, another thing that is important to me is looking into the issue of our least restrictive environment statistics. I, I know at one point, Washington State was the worst in, one of the worst in the nation with regard to inclusive, inclusion around special education. And Seattle Public Schools wasn't, um, doing well. Now, I haven't looked at those statistics for several years, but I do wanna look into that. And then to the extent that we can find other urban districts that are doing better around inclusion, that we look to see if, one, those statistics are indeed truthful. Um, and if they are doing something that we would see as being relevant to our population and our schools and see if we can, uh, learn from who may be doing it better. So, those are some of the things that I hope to work on. And then, of course, as we're, um, trying to determine the future of our high schools, I think that's always exciting. And I'm gonna continue to do what I can to look for ways that our high schools will meet the needs of all of our learners and create a variety of settings that will be exciting and relevant and allow our city to participate and share their resources and their opportunities with our kids. So, I'm really looking forward to this year.
Director Mack? Followed by Director Harris as a heads up.
Um, I don't tend to do the intentions or New Year's resolutions, cause I'm so practical. I, I just, I'm like, well, if I, I don't wanna make a promise that I can't keep. But, um, what I like to hold with me at all times is, um, coming to challenges and problems with, um, the resolution that we can come together and find solutions. Um, and in this case, in my role as the School Board Director and Chair of Operations, um, we face a lot of challenging issues around our buildings, enrollment. And, um, I think there are positive, non-divisive solutions that we can find together. And, um, so I resolve to do my best to make sure that in every, um, situation we are completely engaged in community, listening to all sides, and finding the win-win-win solution for our students and for our community and for Seattle. So, I guess that is a aspirational statement, but, um, so I have my community meeting coming up this Saturday at the Magnolia Library, um, at eleven o'clock. Uh, everyone is welcome. You don't have to be in District Four. You don't have to be in my district to come and talk to me. I also want to give a shout out to my fellow School Board Directors, cause it's School Board Recognition Month this month. Yay! Next, okay, excellent, thank you. And welcome everyone back to school. For me, it was so lovely to have such a long time with my husband and children and, and, um, got some time in the snow. And I turned off the computer for days on end, and it was revitalizing. And it was also lovely that when everybody went off to work and school and had a little time to myself again. So, um, thank you to Salmon Bay and theater. Theater really is important. Um, I think being able to speak in front of others is such a critical skill to learn, and theater does that. Um, I also wanna welcome, uh, Mr. Fred Podesta. Uh, he's not here yet, but he has been hired and he's coming, I think, on the twenty-first. Um, I'm super excited to have our chief operation, uh, uh, new Chief Operations Officer. Am I got the title right? I do. And, you know, my colleague in, in the operations work. So, uh, super excited about that. And, um, I'll hold any other comments until after public comments.
President Harris, would you like to share anything today?
Okay, uh, I guess I'm up. My New Year's resolution, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, terrific. Uh, my New Year's, New Year's resolution will be, um, to continue the good teamwork we have on this Board of Directors and with our staff and to be even more proactive than we are, more accountable, and more transparent. And, uh, big welcome to Dr. DeBecker and to Mr. Podesta. Can't wait till he joins us. We are assembling a heck of a team. Now, we need to figure out how to communicate with each other with, uh, the transparency and the elegance and hopefully with the sense of joy they bear, cause we're doing such important work every day, all day. And, um, and we need to remember that. And we need to remember that, um, the kids come first. My next community meeting is January nineteenth. Fifty-fifty chance for lasagna. Del Ridge Library, three to five. Welcome you all. Thank you. I'll withhold my comments until after, uh, public testimony.
Okay.
You're up, Rick.
Thank you. I will, uh, put a couple of things on there. Um, also, um, welcome Dr. DeBecker. It was nice to Dacker. Get the name right, it'll take me two or three times, but, um, it was great to meet you today. And, um, I'm super excited to hear about, you know, your personal passion and experiences around CTE programs, which I think weaves in really well with a lot of the work that we've been doing, um, in our systems also. Thanks to everyone who's joining us, uh, in the audience or from home today. And I hope your New Year's off to a good start as well. Uh, my last couple of weeks since our last Board meeting has been pretty quiet in terms of School Board, and it's been really blissful, um, to take a little bit of a break. The, pretty much the only real, a little bit of email work and the meeting that Director DeWolf mentioned around our community workforce agreements and trying to understand how to create those partnerships, um, working with our, our staff, um, Richard Best inside Capitol and, and Stephen Goldblatt of the University of Washington. And I have no community meeting set yet for January. I have a couple of work, um, activities that I'm trying to weave in so that I can really lock down my calendar for January, and we'll get all of that set shortly. Uh, in, in, uh, thinking about kind of where, what I would aspire to and what I hope that we will aspire to in two thousand nineteen, it's really to proceed, it's sort of like the way Director DeMac, Director DeMac, ooh. Director Mack? We're gonna merge everybody together here. But, um, to, to proceed with, with empathy and resolve, and really the empathy, um, is something that, the more I do this work on the School Board, the more I realize that, you know, you can aspire to walk in somebody else's shoes, but you really have to talk with them, engage with them, connect with them to understand what their shoes even look like before you can even try. And, and that, when I think of, you know, trying to make decisions with empathy, that's really to, to try to do that, to try to understand the position people are coming from. The other one is the resolve, to, you know, to have that resolve, to do the hard work, to ask the hard questions, to take on those challenges, be really critical of ourselves, and, uh, to do right by our students. Because I think we can continue to push, continue to be better. So, I'm excited to, to do that this year also. And it looks like we have about five or six minutes before public testimony starts formally. And because we're rule followers here, we won't start until, uh, five-thirty. So, uh, I'm going to take a brief recess. Please stay close. We'll reconvene promptly at five-thirty for Board, uh, for public testimony.